Okay, I'm calling the Brandon Board of Education regular meeting to order. If I could get a roll call, please.
Melissa Clark here, Rebecca Haynes here, Lisa Cavalino here, Kim Smith Colada here, Hillary Sipaski here, Jeff Silkey here, Dan Salter here, Dan Gilbertson here, Jen Spisel.
That's him with notice.
Notice, okay. Carly Stone here.
Okay, all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Letting agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic's glorious hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda, we got our monthly bond update from Brian Stilnak, our architect, and weekly. Brian, your floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, here to give you our update for August already, believe it or not, can't believe it, it's coming too fast. So, we're starting off with the renovations for for Harvey Swanson, as we've talked several times before, I did have a chance to meet with the new principal. Just can I sit down and inform her of all the projects and think I overwhelmed her a little bit? So, we're gonna meet again next week, but we went over all the the items that the committees had decided upon before they broke for summer. And then there's some more tasks that we have to look into a little more deeper in the furniture, the media center, and the exterior remodeling for the entrances, et cetera. So, we're gonna meet again now, next week, and then when the meetings come back in September, we'll be meeting with them again to revisit where we were with all their decisions for the furniture and the flooring and so forth, and the cabinetry. And then we'll be finalizing those designs in September. So, we're gonna give a little bit of time to get settled in for the start of school, but then we'll have to be meeting with them again on a weekly basis to to get this wrapped up so we can get ready to offer bids in the fall. So again, we'll be meeting with with the staff when they when they get back in September. High school, again, just to remind you, the projects, we've got some interior classroom HVAC going on. We are creating a new restroom down by the Performing Arts Center. And then there's a couple of roof areas that we're going to be replacing at the high school. In the pool, there's several items. There is a scoreboard and the roof replacement over the pool. Mechanical room piping has some new replacements and so forth to be done. It actually supplies the water to and from the pool. And then the big item was the pool ventilation system that we've talked about several times. So, after looking at the options, we're going to proceed with the with the brand new unit. It's a combination ventilation and dehumidification unit that will be actually mounted outside of the pool on the ground next to the pool because it's rather large. But what it will do for us will give us that missing component that we've been missing since the day they put the pool in, which is dehumidification. That's the item that was never put in, which has caused all the trouble over the years. So, we're proceeding that way and then abandoning the old system that's in place up in the mezzanine. The new unit is large. We can't fit it in the mezzanine where the pool is. So, we'll have to put outside on the on the ground and pipe into the side walls of the the pool. But part of this also will be replacing the duct work that's in the pool because for 20 some years it has not had dehumidification. We're very concerned about the interior of the duct work of what that looks like. So, we'll be replacing that as well to go along with that. So, that'll be happening at the high school. The engineers are moving forward on that. Parking lot designs, again, we were going to be doing the Swanson parking lot and the high school next summer of '23. That was moved forward from '24. So, we're gonna be doing that in the summer of '23 as well. The engineers have all their information. Now, they're doing that design. I'll be bringing some more information to you soon to review that. The athletic field, so again, this is a several component part for the athletic facility. Athletic fields are doing the high school football field turf replacement. We're doing the track surface replacement. And then we're converting the middle school baseball field into the varsity baseball field. And then the soccer field. We've had several discussions on what to do there. Where we left off was keeping the high school field as grass and possibly putting a turf field at Swanson. There's been a lot of discussion we've had on that. The engineers have looked hard at that. We've looked at the existing drainage into the duck creek. We will have to do some type of stormwater management to slow down the flow of water into the creek. Even if we were doing the field at the high school, the current system that's underneath the parking lot does not have the capacity to add the soccer field. So, whichever way the the board decides to do to go, we really feel that Oakland County Stormwater and Eagle will be getting involved. So, rather than do drawings and put out for bids and then send the drawings in for plan review, which lately has been taking eight, nine weeks, we feel the best way to proceed is to be upfront and go right now to Oakland County and to Eagle and say, here's some potential projects we're looking at. What are the implications? What do you see? What are the requirements? What will you be requiring of us if we go to option A, option B, option C? And then get that feedback as soon as possible so that we can bring that back to the board and you can make a decision as far as what's the best way to go economically and feasibly for the for the project.
And if I could, and Jeff can correct me, we at the facility meeting, as I know when you hear this, the decision is, is no decision's been made yet. Is that, or no recommendation has been made? We still don't have all the information. So, right now, nobody's really officially getting turf anywhere. Nobody's officially getting that. You know, what we think is finalized, we haven't focused to one area. We've now brought in our focus to see where our best bang for the buck is, mostly also too for the participation of the sports that will play out there. And so, it's not just, you know, again, a decision's not made. It's really, we have to get more information before we go throwing turf down anywhere because it seems like Eagle and I'm calling it Oakland County Storm. We really have to have the report.
That's the that's the best way to put it. There's really no decision. There's no, I know there's recommendations and the athletic committee kind of wavered back and forth. Plus, you have a new athletic director coming on board too, so we have to get him informed on on the history of what's been going on and the, you know, the opinions back and forth from the coaching staff and so forth. So, I really owe you more information. And again, the way the plan review's been going, we normally submit the plans review when they're completed. So, at the same time, they're out for bid, they're going in for plan review. In this situation, the bidding timeframe is shorter than what the plan review timeframe is. So, even if we say, oh, boy, that's the best, oh, look at that, that's the most economical way to go. We're gonna go this way. Five weeks later, we may get a thing from Eagle and Oakland County saying, oh, no, you need this and this and this. And that would take your bid price and then maybe add to it in funds that we may not have. So, we really feel the best way is to just be right up front right now, get all the requirements they're gonna need. Then we can put numbers on it and say, okay, school board, option A will be this much for stormwater and that much for storm. So, then we can bring it all back to you and you can make an educated decision on which way to go. Again, funding wise for the bond, we only have so much. Yes.
Melissa, I have something.
Go ahead. It was always a tie, so we had to wait.
So, in contrast to some of the other projects that we have going, very exciting. We don't have, you know, we need the bathroom, we're doing the bathroom, or we need this, we're just doing that. There's not, I'd suggest that this, the athletic facilities improvements is is one area where there's clearly going to be a lot of information and can't say thank you enough and respect the committee work that's being done on the board and and all the other stakeholders and the issues and all the works that's being done. Ultimately, do when we have everything that we need, could we have a, I guess I'm gonna go old school and say a chart where it says, here's, you know, this option, this option, and this option, and all factors are measured against the other? Only because I think that, again, this particular improvement is such that there there are many options. And it, I'll speak for myself, I get lost in my issue identification process, you know, in analyzing it, which I am a geek that way and need everything lined up. So, from that standpoint, when we have all the information, could we have, again, with the good work of the committees and everything, have it kind of lined up in a way that is a direct comparison, even if she faces tables up there, everything up there.
Absolutely. I think that's the best way to address it from here.
Thank you.
Once we gather all the information, I'll try and make it as simplistic as possible. But yeah, I wanna break it down by option A, option B, and then also add some pros and cons in there too. So, that's a great comment and I'll gladly do that, try and make it as simplistic. But you, it's gonna be complicated.
Understood.
But because there's so much going on in each of the options that we may go to.
Yeah.
There's so much implication, but I'll definitely do that.
And I'm sure it'll be performed not just from your perspective and then the the building project, facility project types.
For sure.
Perspective also from, you know, if we believe that one approach offers opportunities to do, you know, to post tournaments. Okay, how many tournaments? What's the income potential for that? Who's going to spearhead it? You know, whose plate is that gonna follow? All of those, that information, so we can offset any cost, like everything.
Yep, good comment, and that's exactly what we'll try and do. We'll try and get everything on the table for you so you can see because it's complicated.
No doubt.
When we get our answers back from the county and from Eagle, that's actually gonna be the easy part because we can put some numbers on it and say, boom, here's how it affects the impact of the bond budget. But the other things you mentioned, we're gonna have to revisit that again and just to make sure we we all have all of our answers.
And just for the community's sake, thank you to the committee and the members because from facilities to athletics, you know, to the bond athletics committee, everybody, the amount of time and thought that's been put into this and the other stakeholders that are on the board, amazing. So, many good thoughts, so many good brains coming together analyzing.
At the end of the day, it's 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 gonna be over a million dollar decision, so it needs to have care.
Yes.
So, we share brightly. So, thanks for taking my one buck because I was gonna ask for the flow chart as well. But then secondly, that's not gonna change our bid timeline, right? But we still have to stay hold of that date that you gave us prior. We have to go out by that certain time, given all this new items that have come up.
So, what we're gonna, we're proceeding with the football field, the track, and the baseball field. That's not slowing down because that's really does not have an impact.
Okay.
So, we're full full speed ahead on that. That'll be hitting the, again, the October, November timeframe for bidding.
Okay.
How fast we can get the response back from Eagle and the soccer issue, that's gonna be the.
So, that's what may alter slightly, but we're still, none of the other items are gonna get.
Yeah, the other items are going.
I just wanna make sure we weren't having.
We're not slowing down football or baseball. Soccer, depending upon what happens, you know, maybe soccer has to wait till '24. Maybe we have to wait, you know, get more due diligence and more homework and make sure everybody's comfortable with the soccer idea. But football and baseball are going forward. That'll be bid out for summer of '23 construction.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
The soccer discussion, again, depending upon how fast we can get from Eagle and Oakland County, maybe we have, maybe we're gonna miss the the '23 window. It all depends.
Okay, thank you.
So, your plan is to ask Eagle, like, tomorrow, like, we're moving forward as quickly as possible with this. And when you're talking about that, we're talking about both the high school soccer field and Harvey Swanson.
We're asking for both of those. We're also asking him for in the future because discussion was if we turf some of the baseball field or turf the girls softball field. So, we're asking all these things to them for all these possible options of grass to turf. We wanna get everything on the table right now so we know what we're facing. Because there was discussion about not doing turf and using the money for baseball and softball. So, we're gonna try and approach all those items with Eagle and Oakland County just to make sure, see where our problems are, or maybe it's gonna be more simple than we think, but the way Eagle's been.
And so, when you present the chart that Lisa suggested, just sorry if I'm making this redundant, you're included in there is the possibility of the HSE field being turf or grass, correct? And the same with the high school soccer field?
Correct.
Okay, and then with and without a track at HSE?
Yes, that's a good comment. We're gonna, we're gonna put that into the mix as far as replacing the track at HSE or eliminating the track. So, that's also a component and it'll be in the chart.
Okay.
For sure.
And if I can go back to one thing about the pool. So, when you're talking about this ventilation system outside the pool, are you talking like right outside the school, I mean, pool? How does that look? I guess I'm trying to understand what that is.
It's about as big as a school bus and it'll be on the ground on a pad, on a concrete.
Outside the building.
And outside the building, put some kind of a screen wall around it. But it's too large to put on the roof.
Sure.
But yeah, it's gonna be huge. It just will be missing the yellow paint, but but it's about that size.
You mentioned that if we turf, if ultimately part of the analysis is to turf the high school soccer field, that, and I apologize, I don't know the right terminology, but the the drainage that would come from, you know, that that our current system underneath the parking lot could not accommodate. Does that have any effect on our turfing of the football field?
No.
Would we need to contemplate improvements?
No, to do this, to replace a turf is fine. There's no impact on your system. Yep, not at all. We don't have to do, we're about anything with that. But unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, we couldn't add the soccer field turf to that system and kind of bypass Oakland County. Because when that was designed, the engineers said it was designed for the parking lot and the football field and it's at capacity now.
Thank you.
So, we're kind of hoping that maybe if the option was to turf high school, we could connect it, but we can't.
One thing too, I think it would help me also just if we could see the options, what teams are able to practice on each field too? That could be on that chart.
Great comment because it has to do with the track too. Because if the track is eliminated at Swanson, then we double up at the high school. And that came up during the committee meetings as well as far as it's a scheduling issue big time for middle school, high school on that track. So, that's a great comment and we'll certainly, I'll certainly try and put on there as best I can of what teams are playing on what field and so you can kind of see that as well. I'll have to go back through my committee notes and and because I know I, that was, especially when we talked about Swanson, taking that turf, you know, who might play from the school on Swanson. And I know there's outside organizations also that play on Swanson. So, that that's a, that's a, that's a big part of the of the whole picture.
Are. So, that relates to the lines that are put on each of these. If they're turf, what permanent lines will be on there?
Yep.
And then if they're outdoor, outside organizations, is there any any funding?
That I'm not sure. I'd have to look through.
Thank you.
I mean, Chris had a handle on that before we had D, but I'm not sure if I have all the information.
Understood.
But one thing that was discussed regarding the lines, I know when football field was put in years ago, it was football only.
Sure.
That's not the way the committee was going. We're gonna stripe, but actually for three sports, football, soccer, and lacrosse. So, even if Swanson went to turf, it would also be football, soccer, lacrosse, so we can get as many teams as possible on the fields.
Sure.
That would be an option. Is generating revenue for renting it.
Oh, yeah, and you know, if it's gonna be that much nicer of a field, then awareness is to be had.
And that was huge when we talked about the high school soccer field because there's periods of time when they purposely keep off the soccer field to let it recover after the sport season. So, your comment is is spot on because that was a lot of discussion as far as if soccer field was turf, we're 365 a year on that soccer field and, you know, tournaments and everything else. So, that's gonna have a bearing also in your decision as far as if it stays grass. There are certain times that you don't want anybody on there to let it recover, which which has an implication on the teams.
Right, it already struggles to recover enough in the girls' season.
Absolutely, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got one question.
Yeah.
With the drainage, can big picture, if you looked at Swanson soccer field and the capacity to create, could that be asked to Eagle the, if down the road, say they both got turf? So, there's no, oh, we gotta add more down the road in the future? What would it look like to, you know, accommodate those fields in the future?
Absolutely, yeah, we'll include all that. We'll try and do, you know, the bits and pieces. And then if your whole campus is turf and we're draining into the creeks, how that really acts, you know?
Right, right now with the football field and the parking lot's capacity and, you know, and then we're back to the square one.
Right. And we gotta remember too, the the cooling aspect because of the trout stream and so forth, that does have an impact as well. But even though the engineers feel they can cool most of the water actually below the soccer field before it actually enters the creek, but it all is gonna hinge upon how Eagle looks at that, if that satisfies their requirement.
Anybody else on this?
Okay, so we're gonna have a great fun meeting in a couple of.
Yeah.
But again, we felt that this was the best way. It's just to be right up front and ask them straight out what we're looking at so you can make an educated decision. Worst thing is the word, I'm tracking, four weeks later, I come back to say, oh, by the way, we need to find Kathleen Doc.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, summer, again, we'll be going out October, November for design, for bidding. We wanna get things awarded prior to the holiday seasons, get that behind us. The way for pyramid is to, you know, another thing about the pool, if I can just go back one second, I'm sorry. We wanna get that out also in the October timeframe for bidding, so we award it November. The way the world is today, there's no guarantee that unit will be ready for us for summer of '23 for that pool. It might just not be here. So, that's something we'll have to look at when we put the bids in, talk to the contractors, and we get, basically get our place in line, so to speak. So, I just wanna tell you, just, we need to get out as soon as possible. But the way things have been taking time wise to get the equipment, we don't have a guarantee right now that we can even make summer of '23. So, we'll know more when we get the bids in, talk to the contractors, but that's something out there. I just wanna give you some false hope. Okay, so, we've got that. And then construction update, the playgrounds are beginning at Swanson. They will be completed for for school. I had several conversations with Matt about that. So, he guarantees us we will have the playgrounds ready. Oakwood is done. It's been striped. The parking lot staff can get on right now. We'll be, we are, we're in like a, we call it a punch list stage right now. We're be doing some odds and ends. They'll be demobilizing from the site. Hopefully, they'll be out of there by Thursday. But we will have some odds and ends, obviously. We need it to rain. We need it to rain a few times so we can see the water, make sure we don't have any bird baths, things like that, and get contractor back and fix those areas. But now we, now we actually need it to rain and watch how the drainage goes, make sure it's doing what it's supposed to do. But basically, yeah, it's been striped and they can get on and use it. So, that's, the weather really worked out good for us. We were able to get that done. So, that was, that was a good thing. I think that's all.
Thank you, Brian. Any other general questions for Brian? Thank you for all the work on this.
Okay, I'll be back soon.
We'll see you soon. Take care. Next, we have our superintendent, Superintendent Gilbertson.
Well, thank you, President Salter. Incredibly excited to be here today and really announce we have some talented individuals coming to Brandon and very excited about that. So, I'm gonna have the opportunity to introduce a few. I think we have some principals here who can give me a hand in this process as well. So, committees have done a great job screening candidates, interviewing candidates, and being very thorough. And we feel very great about the people we're bringing to the board for formal approval here. So, if I could, I'll begin first with Dr. Jessica Cohen, our special education director. If you don't mind, come on up for a moment, like to introduce you and welcome you to Brandon. I guess this is real official, but.
Yes.
Very, very excited about Dr. Cohen and the skills that she brings, her experience. And just wanted to welcome you, if you wanna say a couple of words.
Thank you. Yes, I'm really excited to be in Brandon schools. This is my 21st year of education. My third year as an administrator, and I really feel like I found the right home and people in Brandon. Already I've got the administrators and some of the staff members, and it's just a fantastic feeling. I'm excited to partner and keep up the excellence already going on in Brandon and then continue our our journey forward.
And thank you. We we are so excited to have you here. We've been hearing nothing but great stuff. And and to have this position built because this is very important to our district and it always has been. But welcome because you're gonna be over at the Harvey Swanson complex.
Yes.
Yeah, so, any questions for Dr. Cohen?
I'll just share comments. I've received many, what, in our local grocery store? Excellent, and it's the network. It's the network. Just wanted to. With that, also telephone calls, many, many wonderful comments. And with the news of you joining us and many parents, all from parents, looking forward to meeting you and each of their families having neat needs, of course, and they're they're just very excited about the opportunity to meet you and work with you. And I wanted to pass that along to you. And for your first day, you already have a buzz out there of excitement, so I want to share.
Well, thank you so much. I do already have four parent meetings scheduled this weekend. Thank you.
Is your husband?
Yes, my husband.
Yeah, you're a Black Hawk fan.
Hi, everybody. I'm Eric.
Hi.
Welcome.
We're happy to see you wearing the blue and the white in the uniform.
She told me to come.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you.
Also, very excited to, again, formally announce Mrs. Cassandra Adia, our preschool program supervisor. And similar theme here as Dr. Cohen as well. Cassandra, very, I mean, committee members made comments like this, this is a very extremely talented, knowledgeable, go-getter type of person we're bringing to our schools. And I really mean that. We're excited to come here and kind of a new opportunity to have a complete operation run by one person. It was split before. So, I think this is gonna be a real advantage. So, welcome and I would say a few words, please.
Well, I'm excited to be here, to grow my career and to move forward with really high quality practices that are already occurring here. I'm really impressed so far with where the preschool stands and look forward to building even better practices and moving forward with a great team in the future. I'm excited to get started with interviewing some new teachers and associate teachers and filling a couple vacancies that are existing. But it seems like a really great, well-rounded community of really strong early childhood professionals. So, I'm glad to be here and I appreciate guys giving me a little bit of soapbox here.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I wanted to say too, we are very excited also about you because this is the first time we've sort of separated the position and for you to, you know, to be about all our really, really little kids and getting the fun.
That's where my heart is. So, I'm glad to be here and I'm glad to have this opportunity.
Yeah.
Any talk about me in the grocery store, I wonder?
And I talked, I spoke to as best I could, the the basis for the separation and how much value that would add to our school and the individuals serving in those capacities were truly suited, you know, for the areas. And so, I did speak with regard to the separation again, the best I could, and there was a buzz about that too.
I think it'll be a really successful decision that you made because I can see that the balance of roles and responsibilities will be a much better suit for the administrative assistant and the clerk who are working over there, who have been just phenomenal and working to, you know, work into the grindstone to make sure that things continue to run really well and then also to offload some of Carly's extra work. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome.
You're saying to have your brain in the Black Hawk now.
And last but not least, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Jesse Johnson, our new athletic director. And similar theme, again, a very talented group for all of our positions, quite honestly, for us to choose from. We were very fortunate to have great quality candidates. But Mr. Johnson, without any hesitation, really was somebody that we felt was the right fit for the district. I haven't had too much of a chance yet, but I'm gonna get the chance at some point to tell his story. It's his story, but it's a great story. He's just, I think, gonna be a great addition to our district and I'm excited to be working with you. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here.
I'm really excited to be here first and foremost. But I got, Chris Dyson actually is a friend of mine, married to a high school friend. He's the one who called me about this position. I really enjoy, I'll be honest with you, I really enjoyed the school I was at. I was at O L C as athletic director for the last two years and had nothing but good things there. But knowing how much he, because like I said, I wasn't looking, but he was calling me and telling me how much he enjoyed this place, enjoyed the community, enjoyed the school system. And my wife and I, new wife, 16 days.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're looking to put roots down and we want to put roots down in a good community with good schools. And when I heard, when he gave me the, told me that this was opening up and I had a chance to apply for it, it was a no brainer for, for me. So I'm very, very happy to be here, excited to be here, and I'm excited for the things we can do in the future.
Well, thank you. And I gotta say, your resume was very impressive. Yeah, the only thing I can say is I know now you're wearing blue and white.
I know.
But our fight song is the same tone or tune to the green and white fight song. So you'll be right there going with it.
So I'll know it.
You'll know it.
The quick story, my old job, my, that, O L C, we were Mason Blue. Well, I'm a green.
You should be.
So the first, like, three weeks on the job, my superintendent walks by, he goes, you know, you can wear blue and gold. Looked at him, I was like, how much less stuff you think I have in my box? Yeah, I have a little bit more blue now than I did.
Well, I will tell you, I didn't hear it at the grocery store, but I've had a lot of conversations about you. And so you have a reputation that has been one of very positive and exciting. So we are looking forward to working with you and you helping our athletes on the field and.
Absolutely. See what we can build, see what we can do.
Yeah, we're excited to do it.
The buzz extends. I know when you hear from your just turned 16 year old son who says, you know, I hear about the committee's meeting. And what do you know, mom? What do you know? What do you, what do you know?
They've all been very curious about you, so.
Any questions for me then?
No, just have fun with them.
They're a fun group.
But they're all, they're all talking about it, so.
Looking, like I said, looking to build something, got some ideas. I know that we've talked about, yep, that I want to implement. The first part will be just evaluating where we're at right now, where we're at right now. Then I could say this is the next step, so we need to, we need to accomplish to reach our goals. So as teams and individuals.
Perfect.
Anything else?
So we also have some additional staff that are here, but maybe I'll start with Mr. Stevens. And thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Stevens. And I know you've got some outstanding educators that are joining our ranks. I haven't had a chance to meet them yet, so you would please introduce.
Well, good evening, everybody. Hope everybody had a great summer. We're all excited to get back and we've been back to work for a while. I'm excited to get back with some of our new employees. So we were able to hire this summer two new people, the Brandon High School staff. First, Georgina, can I come up with? Georgina, I, I was not part of her interview process when she was hired back in May. But the people that were part of her interview process couldn't stop talking about how well-rounded Georgina is and all the many experiences that she's going to bring to Brandon High School. So we are super excited to have her as a special education teacher at Brandon High School. Georgina, if you don't mind, maybe just, just really quickly touch it on your, your, your history, your practice and stuff before you were here.
So I'm Georgina Nantou. Thank you for welcoming to Brandon Schools. I'm excited to be here. This was going to be my 14th year of teaching. I have been born in Romania, well, I was born in Romania. I moved to the United States in 2002, so I'm an immigrant. I became a US citizen in 2011. I am married. Education wise, I have, I have two masters, an education specialist and a postgraduate degree in behavior analysis. So I worked in my career with a lot of special needs students and I'm happy to be part of Brandon School District.
Welcome.
I have a little bit of emotions, like I'm nervous.
Well, welcome to Brandon.
Thank you.
And secondly, we have a math opening over the summer. So we're really excited. We, we were wondering what kind of applicants we're gonna get for math. We know that it's a very high needs position, not a lot of teachers out there. But we got extremely lucky. In our interviews, there was one person that really stood out above the rest, very energetic. And I know she's gonna be an amazing teacher coming up, Sarah. It's Sarah, Sarah Moore, who also, not only is she gonna be a math teacher, but she stepped right in and said, what else can I do? And we just happened to have a, we just happened to have a POMs opening, of which she has a lot of experience in POMs. So Sarah, if you don't mind, tell them the board a little bit about yourself as well.
Yeah, I just graduated from Grand Valley, where it's also in the POM team. So this is gonna be my first year teaching, but I did, I grew up in the state of this day from White Lake, so around this area. So this is gonna be my first year doing it all. But I am also nervous, but very excited. We just had our first day of POM practice tryouts today. So I'm excited to get started a little.
How'd it go?
Good, yeah. We had 11 girls show up.
Yeah. We all say, we all say, ooh, ah, because that has been Lisa, because the, 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 you know, coaching. Who is she? I'm like, I don't know, we don't get POMs in our house. Like, I don't. That's why we're all like, oh, now we get it. Thank you for teaching math as well. Welcome to Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have, I don't know if she's here, if she is, Kiana? And also Koi, is that Kiana? So we have, can I say it right, Kiana or Kiana?
Kiana.
Kiana, nice to meet you. Kiana Gold, so speech language pathologist.
So this is a really fun one for me. I was not at all involved in her interview process. However, Kiana's mom, Lisa Gold, who is here, was a teacher at Oakwood. And so I've watched her grow up through photographs her whole life. And so to have her join our team as a professional speech pathologist and fulfill that need for us is super exciting for us. So we know her history, we know where she comes from, she's good stuff, and we're super excited to have her join our team.
I am, I'm so excited. She's a 2015 Brandon graduate. My daughter graduated with her. So that is so, welcome back.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Do you want to tell a little bit where you came from or anything about yourself?
Yeah, so I grew up in Orville, went to Brandon Schools. I graduated with my masters in 2021. So this will be my second year in the career for speech. I actually did an internship at Brandon Schools too, at Harvey Swanson. I fell in love with it, so that's why I came back. So nice to meet all you guys. I'm excited.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
And we have a preschool teacher, I believe, Ms. Melissa, is it Gervais?
Gervais, yeah.
Gervais? Come on up, if you don't mind, it'd be great to have your, I'm sorry, I haven't just a meeting yet, so please introduce yourself. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Melissa Gervais. I am a new preschool teacher at Harvey Swanson. I'm very excited to be here. I have 11 years' experience teaching kindergarten at a local private school. I've been home for a couple of years with my kiddos. I'm so excited to get back in the classroom, I'm like chomping at the bit. Ordered so much stuff. Getting ready. And I'm really excited to be here at Brandon. I actually did my student teaching here a long time ago at Bellian Elementary with Deb Jacobs. And so it's great to be back and I'm bringing my youngest daughter with me. She'll be coming to Harvey Swanson in the first grade.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Not sure if we have any more tonight that are here present. I know we've hired more staff, but just the ones that we invited that could make it, you want to introduce. We miss anyone else? So I think for actual new staff that's present, we did our introductions and excited about all the new staff ranks that are here. I will go for the next point if I could. We also have Mr. Gary Putt here. If it's all right, Gary, if you come on onto the podium. He is a Knights of Columbus in Orville here. And Mr. Putt has been a chairman for 17 years. I believe he is presenting two checks this year.
Yes.
One for $1,992.46 from the Tootsie Roll Drive and looks like a $1,468 check from the Bob Knowles fundraiser.
Both correct.
Okay, so, so good. For the past 30 years, donations from the Tootsie Roll Drive have been given to the Brandon Special Education Department. So thank you very much for serving our students and those students in need and for your role in bringing forward that money and helping our families. So if you'd like to say a few words, or maybe I don't want to steal all of your lines, if you have words to share.
Well, it's good to be back. You know, I made this presentation for seven years, but it's all been, you know, pre-pandemic. So it's an honor for our council to present these checks. As well, you know, to both my kids are Brandon High School graduates, so. And so I'd like to present these checks. Those have been on the Bob Knowles, was a MI Drives, our Tootsie Roll Drive that we give every year. You'll see us passing out Tootsie Rolls on the local businesses or maybe on M15. And but the Bob Knowles is something new that we have. It's named after one of our active members who passed away about four years ago from cancer. And it's held at a gun range and they have a contest and all the proceeds we give to a couple organizations. And this year it happens to be Brandon Special Ed. And we'll probably do it again two years from now. So I would like to present these checks to whoever would like to receive them.
They'll be right there. Hold on one second, I'll come to you. You okay?
There you go.
Thank you so much for your generosity and maybe we'll do a.
All right. One more. I'm a mom, I gotta take 50 scoops. There we go.
Mine has a timer on it. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just another, I guess, update if it's okay. To share, our technology department is, actually has outstanding results from, from what we're hearing. Very prompt responses when there's ever a work order given. So we're trying to meet that standard district wide, because we're like 100% satisfaction with the administrators is what I hear. So that point, I think, is important. But however, we still are struggling, like Brian had mentioned, with some supply chain issues. They're, they're installing the camera system, they're running the cables for the camera system, I should say. But supply chain issues are slowing that process down a little bit. So to be clear, we have lots of cameras in this district. We're just adding more. And to even go further towards, the district has made that decision, the board has made a decision. And so I'll keep you updated in terms of how that progress goes on the installation of those cameras. I will say that our phone systems now are all, I believe, operational 99.9% completed. So we're still learning them a little bit, but they're working well. So that's a quick technology update for you. And, you know, other than that, I'll just, I guess, that's probably for my super important enough for tonight and.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That was a lot. That was good stuff, all good stuff. Okay, next, we have public comments and questions on agenda business. We're just gonna go check to see if anybody signed in.
No sign in, it's there.
Okay, then we'll check virtually. Yep, I gotta remember this. Keep forgetting that there's. Anybody have their hands up?
No, no one has their hand up.
Okay. Next, we have approval of our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, any discussion? Have we none? Could I have a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Cavalino?
Yes.
Kim Smith-Klau, I guess.
Larry Sikowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zeilke?
Yes.
Dan Salted?
Yes. Next, information and discussion items, board reports. The only thing I had in a little bit, or Jeff, one of, I think I already gave our board report from facilities, but go ahead.
Yeah, I think really that came up was just making everything transparent with the drains and Eagle. So there's no surprises and get a good decision made when everything's in front of us.
Yeah, exactly. I agree. Anybody else have a board report or something that's important? Okay. Next, education report, Carolyn Stone.
Thank you, Maria is gonna put the tech over there for us.
Okay.
It's good evening, nice to see everybody. It's fun to talk about teaching and learning again, that's because it's almost time to welcome everybody back. But just gonna have a, you know, a brief conversation with you about what we've done recently, what we're working on and what we're looking forward to. And so with that said, I do need my notes. She's almost there. But I know one of the first things that I wanted to share with you in terms of what we've accomplished, and Mr. Stevens is here and so is Mrs. Kazalsky. Credit Recovery was a big program that we cover every summer in which our students, who are high school students, have the opportunity to earn back credit they may have not earned during the school year. And so we're very thankful to say that we had 65 students enrolled in the program this summer. The majority of our ELA and math courses were actually taught in person. We had a couple of, only a couple of students here or there that needed the unique English class. But if we had a bulk of kids who were looking for ELA 9, for example, which we had a few. And also the same with Algebra I and such. We actually created a live in-person session, because we believe that's the most powerful way to support students, especially those that were not successful the first time around. However, there are other courses that we have available at the high school and students that need to recover those courses as well. So we were fortunate enough to have some of our Brandon certified staff lead a credit recovery lab here at the high school where we use our edmentum program, our courseware product, to provide them online credit recovery. So as of my most, most recent count, and I anticipate this number changing as some students were able to extend their time. We have 59 semester-based courses passed in which students earn credit for, because of that program this summer. So a huge shout out to the Brandon High School team for putting all of that together. Christine Horberg was monumental. She is one of our support staff members at the high school and she helped coordinate, facilitate that with the support obviously of Mr. Stevens and Mrs. Kazalsky. So very thankful for that. And then also in July, we had our extended school year program in which we support our students who have a variety of special needs throughout the summer months. And so that was a lot of fun, like you know, one day a week in July and their involvement in a variety of different activities, some social, some academic, but it was really fun. Students K-12, some students that I see in the hallway when I'm hopping down the high school along with some little first graders, just the cutest thing, you little Charlie. Whenever I forget Charlie, wherever's Charlie, he's like my new favorite. He's adorable. So, but that was great and I'm really happy to say that that was successful. What are we working on right now? We're working on our Summit Academy enrollments for the coming school year. As you can recall, in the spring, we talked about transitioning from our home from home program as we knew it to be at that time to our more, we say, application, application-based programs for the coming school year. And we currently have 23 students enrolled in that program. So we have four of those are elementary, the rest of them are secondary with the bulk of those leaning toward our high school students. So pretty excited about that. That's a big reduction in what we've seen over the past couple of years. So we started with almost 800 students at the peak of, at the prime of COVID. And this past year, we were about 120 something, looking back on our expert.
It was a little off from that. I think it was, we started around 120 and something and then about at the semester, we ticked up a little bit to closer to 140.
So glad she's here. Very good. So yes, and so now we're down to 23 online, which is very exciting to us, because many of the students have struggled online last year, but the students that needed to be with us the most. And because of the criteria that we put into place with our application program, looking forward to welcoming more students back in the buildings this fall. Another big project this summer has been our middle school academic intervention planning. Some of you are familiar with the fact that we have a new middle school math intervention program as well as reading intervention program. A lot of training has happened this summer. We are bringing in AARI, which is actually a county-supported initiative regarding adolescent reading specific to nonfiction comprehension supports. And so we're really excited to, to launch that. Our teachers participated in all of the training this summer. And then we've also been working. And then we've also been working very closely with our mathematics intervention programming. In fact, I was in a meeting working with our teacher last week, putting plans into place for the program to launch this fall. So very excited, very, very happy with the work and the time that our teachers are putting in in preparation. In fact, I hope she doesn't mind, but one of the teachers texted me and said, I can't wait for next year. I think this is going to be the best year I've ever had as a teacher. So that feels really good to hear as we get ready to launch those new programs that are coming here. Right now, we have, a lot of our state assessment data is coming back. So right now, it is embargoed, meaning we can't share it publicly, and it's really with us to look at and to review. And so we have quite a variety of that, of those data points coming back in. And so we are now processing all of that information to determine our next steps with how we, how we use that information when working with staff, and then what are our goals in terms of written instruction alignment to help improve those scores moving forward. And then thank goodness, Mrs. Cohen, Dr. Cohen is here, super excited. She and I, already on day one, we were in a meeting with some staff members talking about where we are social-emotional planning-wise for the school year and generating some thoughts and ideas ready to go for the coming school year and beyond. So looking forward to that too. So we're working on all of those things. And then one more thing, this big one right now, we have a hundred and thirty kindergarten through fourth graders over at Harvey Swanson right now in our camp learning experience. It's intentionally designed to provide literacy support to our most struggling readers, but we also bring in math support as well. We also have special education support, English language, English language learner support. That's enough. Say that three times. And then social-emotional support as well. So this coming, this week right now is our last week of the three weeks, and we try to do some fun. And we do for Pirate Week this week, you'll get to see some cannonball launches, which are really just blank water balloons. The second week of space, they're making some galactic hoopla. And so we're trying to make it fun, not just sitting and reading, but some really fun themes. And I think the first week, they now got to make their own birdhouse, to take their bird feeders. So thankful for the Meet Up and Eat Up program, where all those students participating are able to receive a free lunch and breakfast, thanks to our amazing food service staff here in the district. So anybody to wrap that up? Knowing that, I think we're looking forward to Melissa welcoming everybody back, our staff and our students. We do have professional development scheduled with all of our staff members, all of the new teachers, some of you here this evening, and some of them that are not, will be joining us for a full-day training in order to get to the district. And then the day after that, Dr. Gilbert, or Mr. Gilbertson, excuse me, will be welcoming back all of our staff members to launch our first day. And then our second day will be Alice Training, coordinated with Lieutenant Glover and also the Training Department over at the Open College Department. So pretty excited about that. We had a meeting about that this morning, actually, to get some more details. Finally, so pretty excited. And then lastly, just for students before we prepare for school to begin, just a reminder for anybody listening for days and such, BMS's registration is the twenty-second, BHS the twenty-third, and then our elementary meet and greets will be happening on the thirty-first. So let's get some cute pictures. I always have to get the pictures in there for our little ones at Camp Aaron, doing all kinds of fun, good stuff. So just wanted to share those with you with our little Blackhawks, keeping the learning going all summer long. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Carly. Anybody got any questions for Carly? Thank you. Great, great job and great work. Okay, next, we have our transportation update.
I just have a update for the board. So first student, Josh Thompson, his supervisor came to us essentially wanting to ensure that we understood that they were raising rates for rate of pay for our bus drivers, no cost to the district, but to be more competitive. So that was a welcomed response and opportunity that first student has provided for us. However, with that, and I think you know this from my previous communication this weekend to the board, but I think it's worth repeating here out loud in board meeting for everyone to hear. We also feel that it's important that we find opportunities to compensate our aides additionally as well that are on those buses. And so that's a little trickier process, but that's our attempt to fulfill it. The question was, when we met with first student and the representatives, was whether or not those, I think there's seven aides could become district, I should say, I think, I think paid through edge of staff. So they would be contracted that way, and we could compensate them an additional, I think it was around three dollars an hour or more, and still save the district money. So that was the, we're waiting for first student to confirm that, that they will be able to meet that amendment to the contract. We anticipate them doing that. We don't have that tonight. We felt it was important to share this with you. The other piece of this puzzle, it does sound as though they're able to cut one route, which will also be a savings to the district. So the combination of cutting one route, and if we can slide those seven aides into edge of staff, give them a raise, they become a third-party employee. But again, we still would give them a raise, saves the district money as well. That would then permit some funds for first student to hire a second mechanic. As we learned, there really should be two mechanics rather than just one. And so, you know, and we believe that's important. I'll like to fill our agreement with them, but that would be, as we have seen in what I communicated to you previously, a wash financially, if all of these, most pieces of, I guess, pieces of opportunities align, which we anticipate will. So we just don't have confirmation on that yet. So again, in summary, the idea was to get an additional mechanic and at the same time, cut the, cut one route for savings, which Josh says he can handle the routes without any issues with one less route. And that's a savings to the district. And then bring in those seven out of first student, those seven aides are no longer working directly for them, would save the district money, but also give them a raise. So that's where we're at with that proposal. We're just waiting for them to respond officially to permit this to happen. So that was why we wanted to make sure it was upfront, and everyone can hear it and ask any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Well, great, transportation, we'll probably have something next month.
That's what I'm anticipating.
Yep. Okay, next, we have our action items. Can I get an approval of the human resource report?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented.
Any discussion? Having none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Catalina?
Yes.
Kim Smith-Kolaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Next, can I get a motion for the non-homeside operating village proposal resolution?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the non-homeside operating village proposal resolution as presented. Support.
Okay, in this, go ahead.
I can share some facts regarding this, this motion, non-homeside operating village. So basically, as it is, Brandon School District has state per pupil funding allowance of nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. But the school district only receives seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars for per pupil funding from the state. So the difference must be collected locally from the operating tax levy. So it's a pretty significant difference. If this, and by the way, this has been passed since nineteen ninety-four, when Proposal A occurred. So this is something that all districts go through. The key, I think, in this message here for this November eighth vote is that there is no tax increase on property taxes to any primary residents. The proposed village is not assessed, again, on a primary residence or qualified agricultural properties. The proposed village is assessed primarily on commercial, industrial, vacation homes, and rental properties. But this is very common for school districts, really all school districts have to do this at some point. So we were hoping to save the district money as well, but putting out a November election doesn't cost us any money to have a special election this way. So we plan to promote this further in advance of November eighth and get it out into the newspaper. So that's coming very soon. And communicate that to the staff, to all of our community and official man here very soon.
So the vote on this will solidify that will be on the ballot in November. It doesn't affect homeowners, it affects the properties that you just said. And yes, I know we already have a non-homeside village that we're actively part of. So we do get this all the time too, because the money is very, very important to the school district and our staffing and our classes.
Without, well, I guess, using Ziesel's words, if this doesn't pass, it will be difficult for the school district to function. We would lose roughly two thousand dollars per pupil. So it's significant. But again, this does not increase anyone, any primary residence taxes at all.
And this has been going on since Proposal A.
Correct.
So this is not anything new.
It is not.
Any other comments, questions? Having none, could I get the roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Catalina?
Yes.
Kim Smith-Kolaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of technical corrections to the board policy, policy resolution?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the technical corrections for policies as presented. Support.
Okay, discussion on that?
I'd be happy to. Similar to board policies that we're updating in the, in the pungling way, obviously, we want to make sure we're, is up to date our policies as possible. In this case, these are actual title coordinators, compliance coordinators and so forth. There have been staff members who have left the district that were in these positions, and we just need to update our names, so people know who to contact if they're looking at Title IX policy or sexual harassment type of complaint or any type of complaint at all. It needs to be accurate, so they know who to contact. We work with our legal firms. We have two. We have the Trune Firm and also Tharkill, who guide the training for each one of these individuals that are listed. So this is really nothing new. We're just updating it to reflect the current staff that we have. And any staff that have not yet been trained will have that opportunity to be trained.
And I think every staff person's name had to be changed to the, because they're no longer hearing about.
Some of them, some of the names worse are still the same, but most are different, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Catalina?
Yes.
Kim Smith-Kolaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. And next, we have citizens input. I don't know if anybody signed up or.
Check here.
Yeah, we'll check there first.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. And I didn't think anybody, I didn't see anybody sign up either, since we've been past check. Okay, next, we're going to go into closed session for security planning. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to enter a closed session in purpose of security planning for the safety of students and staff as presented. Support.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Lisa Catalina?
Yes.
Kim Smith-Kolaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Silke?
Yes.
Dan Salter?
Yes. Okay, we will be going. Thank you for attending and welcome all the hip people. Okay, we're back in open session, coming out of closed session. Any board members got any comments they want to make before we end? Having none, meetings adjourned.